We will call the meeting where is the same meeting in a long time and I did write on my computer. Okay. I would swear again, Mr. Allison, Miss Vegas, and you. Oh, I can hear you. Thanks.
All right. Okay, so those things weren't in, it would be Samantha and Blake and Alana for the stand and raise your hand to repeat everything. I just solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will pay for discharge of duties.
I will pay for discharge of duties.
The office of library trustee.
And the office of library trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
Alana, we're going to use the phone. To me. We both, we probably had to have her say that.
So I've got, I assume you were saying that even though you were muted? Just checking to make sure that's all correct, signed, or.
I can't hear you.
I can hear you, let me.
I try.
We can barely hear you, Alana.
I don't know.
That's a little better.
Okay.
And then I give it to the, I send it to the camera. Then I'll have something for you to sign, Alana, the next time I see you.
Okay. A little bit, yeah, we hear you a little bit. It's probably us.
Matt's gonna see if he can do anything, Alana, to make the volume better, but you may wanna utilize the chat function if you need to throw in something. Can't hear you, but not very well.
Well, it's working. Whatever you're doing.
Yeah.
We are getting progressively back at that.
Okay, now try it. Say something.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Much better.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, I make a motion to approve consent agenda.
There is a motion to present the agenda as presented, sorry, second, all second.
You also need to get approval for the things to.
That's correct. So Alana has requested and quite to participate in this meeting virtually for work reasons. So legally, we have to go through this process, so if they would object, I guess please we say no, we will vote in front, otherwise, we will proceed with the business. I see Alana as adding a motion. So thank you, thank you. Beautiful, like I said, we look out, we were there, it's been a motion on the floor to present the agenda in a second, so any discussion? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and the chair, aye have a motion, hear you. We will move down into public comments. Do not see, unfortunately, joining this evening, so we will move down now to communication from the butt lady.
Aside from one, I refer to the finance meeting, former city council person emailed to say that we should be in the ears of city council members about our.
Look, yes, finance. Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. We will move down into the reports. Will you fix the rotation, Greg?
Uh, yeah.
Sure, I'll start. Since the last board meeting in May, the systems department, we've replaced all nine research computers and monitors with new. We've replaced a total of twenty-nine computers funded by a state grant that replaced all the bakery computers on the floor and all the lab computers and monitors, and we donated ten of the bakery computers to Pinkwell. They'd asked for ten of them. City Blue replaced all of our Watts printers with Epson inkjet printers and computers. And today's bid to solutions installed their current high management software which replaced the CASS system and the DAK. And.
Been a busy summer. That's a word. Systems. And that grant was the amount of twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars came out of the. We didn't, we did a platform, but we won the grant before we won. So they sent us an email saying, and actually the phone grant, hey, good news, you got a, you got a grant. And I thought it was about the building grant, we'll talk about that later, but it was a grant nobody ever heard of, the new grant, the technology grant. It's based on the received needs, it's based on the economic status of the community, and then they sent us the application for the grant. And we chose, well, we chose to use it, the twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollar technology grant, and since we were budgeting to replace all the computers next year, that was mere three of a three-year process, we decided to go ahead and get it done.
What question did you think the Epson inkjet placement's worth in improvement?
Once we get heavier paper, they'll be better. Paper we have right now, they don't practice that.
Okay, heavy paper, give me that problem. Fantastic. I may still need it, but.
Wow. I'll fill you in on library. Okay, so we have finally finished the summer reading challenge for adults, teens, and children. It's been a very busy summer, it always is. Our numbers are approximately the same as last year, although Children's is reporting the highest number since August in 2014, which is excellent, but still just a minimal increase. I would like to report that while we're busy doing summer reading challenges, staff are extremely busy on the multitude of committee work. We have a photo conduct committee which has finished their product and has been approved and accepted by the library, but we are now doing role-playing in the mornings once a week to show staff how to use the photo conduct usefully. And that's, it's been not just useful, but fun as well. And Ty Conburton, who is the chair of that committee, he always asks for volunteers, so you never know who's gonna be one of the role-players. Another committee is the incident report committee, which I reported on here before. We have a new incident report table that we've been meeting successfully for several months. We have just released the best practices manual to show you how to write the best possible page report, make sure all the appropriate information is included. And that committee is now working on version two of a set of library use guidelines that we would like to present to you sometime in the near future. We're getting very comfortable with it. Kind of, there are several things, for instance, sleeping in the library, you've been doing soft since COVID, doing wellness checks on patients who are falling asleep, and not making people leave, just make them fall asleep. I have had programming librarians meet together to discuss ways to amplify culture in our library. I have had collections librarians meet to discuss what kind of display furniture we wanna get when it's that time. We've been working on, the librarians are on input onto the plan and marketing, and I think they have a lot of input into that. So it's been very busy. We now have a gaming policy committee at this meeting because we're gonna have a gaming room, so we can get new furniture, and so there is, there are staff who are working on what kind of technology's gonna be there, and we have librarians working on what we want it to look like, and it works best when we work together. And so we're on version two of that policy already, so despite the fact that we've been busy with summer reading, we've been a lot other than done.
We were wanting to be, our team librarians, it's Alexis.
Alexis. So we have an Alex, Alexis, Alyssa, Amanda.
We're like, hey.
Lots of them.
But that's been our children's department, they will be bringing it in for a while, so I assume.
These are the higher. Cortaining.
Has a K. That works out. Well, I assume with that, children's has, there's that gaming incentive, those things will work very significantly with each other, so I'd love to see if they.
All right, first of all.
You've been here for over eleven hours, so.
See ya.
Nice to see you.
See ya. Thank you.
May through August is a lot.
Yeah, and I, and I apologize because I didn't see the, those reports were within your package. I did write in my report, and I wrote a June-July report, and here's the, here's the August report. And I, what I really wanna talk about, I think, as far as that, because I wonder, kinda certain numbers here. I don't know, let me. Well, I'm gonna share the screen with you, if I remember how to do it. Can you see that? And sharing, yes, because I'm sharing, so. And that's not the one I want to share, maybe, this is. Okay. So I wanna kinda look at, at just usage numbers this year because they, they are up, and woo, that's a good thing. So this is kinda raw numbers. Remember materials one, we've got, teen is up, and adult is up, we didn't see a pretty good drop this, in August, in children's materials, and I think some of it had to do with the fact that we had to have, because of water shortages, we had to have things covered up for a good portion of the month. That might have something to do with it. You can see, that's a, that's a pretty precipitous drop in one month. Children's circuit, although adult and teen are then, I mean, teen up five percent, that's, that's great. Twelve-month trend, I think, is more so. So you can see, we're up on all counts there. So this is the last twelve months compared to the twelve months prior to that. Orange for the last twelve months. And in terms, in terms of percentage, adult circulation up five percent, teen circulation up nine percent, children's up three, and overall, a four percent increase. And here's what I'm projecting for the year. Again, I'm projecting based on what we, on the data we have so far this year, and I'm projecting an increase in every, for every audience. And here it is by material type. So physical books, in August, was down. Videos were up, audios were up.
Thank you.
This is, this is physical audio, so this is CDs.
Oh, no, no, no.
Physical audio. Magazines were down, other items, that's mostly, that's mostly hotspots. And circulating, circulating electronic materials is up.
That's me.
So the biggest, the biggest gain is by in terms of percentage, audio is up forty percent. And, and Blake, for your, the rest of those, we don't compare to last month, we compare to last August, because there's predictable seasonal ups and downs.
Who says you don't have physical audiobooks, that's a nice one.
Uh.
CDs.
It's, I think this isn't a anomaly, okay? This is, this August wasn't a anomaly. Overall, the trend is not good for physical audio. It will go, it will go away, I predict, within five years. I mean, just go away.
But you said that, like DVDs and stuff like that.
DVDs, I think, will stick around a little, a little longer.
Or maybe camcorders, you know, it's.
And, you know, and we do, it's also not just audiobooks, through audiobooks, it's also music, I mean, we do, we do circulate some of that.
My husband would be going through the way all my CDs.
So this is the twelve-month trend, and you see, books is basically unchanged, DVDs up a little bit, audio down a little bit, magazines is tanking. I mean, guys, we're getting noticing notifications every month about another publication stopping a publication, and another magazine stopping, or going out once a quarter, monthly, or whatever.
Life is so sad when magazines die, but it really happens. It becomes so expensive to, yeah.
So, but look at this trend for use of circular electronic materials. This is, this is the last twelve months compared to the twelve months before that. That's a twelve thousand increase, an increase of twelve thousand. So overall, the trend is good.
Despite the cap, is it? Was that, despite limitation of cap?
Yes. So in terms of percentage, you can see, books are slightly up, DVDs are slightly up, audio is slightly down, magazines down quite a bit. Other items, I wouldn't pay attention to that because we, we had, we count, we change the way we count, so we, so we think, but this is, this is electronic.
I will say, I have friends that have joined the library just in the early times.
Yeah.
I mean, my friends are like, this is not.
I want to say, I want to say, this is, this is an important thing to, to think about also because it's a paper use model.
So it's expensive.
Yeah, exactly. So, and, you know, overall, last, you know, twelve months, it's four percent, four percent increase. Here's what I'm projecting for the year, basically, a slight decrease in books, a slight increase in, in, also in terms of percentage. And I know, perhaps, I can't, I don't know if that's what I'm adding, or you do. Oh, actually, I did put in terms of percentage. So anyway, it's a, it's a, I'm looking at a slight increase in physical books or decrease in physical books, like decrease or increase in DVD currently, or something like that. A pretty good, you know, a decrease of about a thousand this year in audio. Magazines, not as shocking a decrease as you might think, but circulating materials, you know, up sixty-one thousand from last year, which gives us a, hey, when I started here, guys, our annual survey was overturning this. We're pushing forward. Turn of the century is happening. We're not the only ones experiencing this, this is a, this is, this is a trend, but we're pointing back out. That's, that's the thing, that's the thing, that's my takeaway here. So, but, and in a library alone, something is happening that I really like. While the books were sending other libraries to decline, the books were getting from other libraries, it's increasing, so that makes, you know, that's a, I'd rather be in that bar, we're not there yet, but the arrow's pointing in the right way, in the right direction. So other obvious stats, new patron registrations was down from last August. Users at the security gate, I wouldn't pay much attention to this because we have a new system that's more accurate, last year's system, I think that's just an inaccurate number. This is one that's more important to look at in the lobby count. That's about, it's over a thousand more people coming through the door. Maybe we're checking out fewer items, but we've got more people coming through the door. Also, this used to be, the local user visitors, this used to be a hand count, now it's an electronic count, so it's more accurate. Total programs attendance is up, the number of assists is down, but that, I think, is probably not, probably not captured. And, but it's also, it's also added children's.
If you said that, that counter, book pusher was being done by general headcount.
It was signing, there was a signing sheet, and now it's a, we've got a, we've got a camera up there that can't, or that wants to the door. Unfortunately, it also counts down. So it's still not accurate, a hundred percent, but I, I can tell you, we're not.
That's true.
Yes, yes. We were not, we were not capturing. So I, I think that the, you know, the trends are, you know, books are kinda flatlining, although earlier in the year, we're looking, we're looking better, where electronics up, DVDs are on the, on the upswing, and, but there's some that electronic circulating material is starting to decline because we were seeing twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-eight percent increases over the last couple months, it's been four, five, so.
I have a question, are we, do we have the same amount of large books that we always had, or are we.
We have more.
Are large.
We have more.
Because the thing is, is I have a friend who had, she doesn't know how to get online and order a book, but if you don't have the large print, maybe that'd be buy it from her on Amazon.
Yeah, I mean, large print books are made more expensive.
No, I know.
Quite a bit more expensive.
I love them.
Not everything's in large print, but.
I'm just saying that because a lot of, like, older people prefer the large print.
We, we.
And they start getting books.
We, we increased our storage, our shelving for large print because it's a, it's a growing demographic, you know? And we have increased that, we've increased the size of that, but we probably, here we doubled that in the last ten years, so.
That would, that would.
We rarely, when we, we, Shelley Whiteside has her collection, which she does fantastic job, and I know what she reads, we, we follow a certain protocol, like, it's been checked out in the last three years. That's one, she never finds anything familiar, I mean, that whole collection too, all the time. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a growth collection for sure. And again, chart person, all of the stats plus more are, are, I think it's a little more, I don't know if you said this, total program, I can break it down, a lot of types of programs. So again, these are the numbers of programs, these are the numbers of attendees.
Is there another, is there a new app that I'm, that I'm aware of for, like, audio books, see if, if.
When we got rid of, again, you, what you, you don't know, is when we got rid of Libby.
That's a library to be asked.
There is a library, but it's not, it's more.
It's not buying, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but when we got rid of, when we got rid of Libby, there was much fewer crime, but our numbers.
I mean, I, I hear people still, women, but like, they don't look anymore.
It doesn't play with Kindle, because, because Hula doesn't play with Kindle, that's the main reason.
Oh, people like to them.
It plays with the fire, Kindle Fire, but not, not.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. But you know what's up, in connection with downloading, right? And then you download it, and some of it's Amazon.
Yeah, well, it is Amazon, and, and, and it was, I've got, there's no incentive for them to change that.
Of course not. They're already buying it, of course. Of course, yeah. I do both, I do both Hula and Hula.
I do too, I always check some book out to Hula first, and then if they don't have it, then I.
So, it's, it's, I'm gonna, I'm gonna email you guys that does other reports, that from, from maybe June, July, but, you know, we've got big agendas, so I just, I thought I'd just focus on, on numbers.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna, we're gonna do reports, committees, personnel, policy and publications committee. First up on that agenda is the software use policy action item.
We recommended, so we should, we have to act up on, no change to, no change to this policy, it's just, it's for the recommendations, staff, is there a motion to?
I think a motion, I'll say a.
A motion, a second, any consensus? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And here, I have the chair, I move down to the workplace formation, harassment, violence, and retaliation.
Same story here, this is the city indicator policy that we adopted in the interim.
Say this is very boring.
Yeah. We adopted it, we haven't, they have amended it, and, they have amended it, and we, the committee didn't recommend any amendments to it, so.
I make a motion to assess.
A motion, and, sorry, first. Then a second, fantastic, any discussion? Saying none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. The chair, I have the chair, I have the chair, I move down to the DEI committee discussion, which I know that they went down from every month to every other month, and which was supposed to be yesterday, apparel was still, and everything, every day of the week, and so, so. Unfortunately, I have a team meeting at that very time, it's currently, I wish I could know that as much as I'd like to, but, but we're at a point of speaking here, so. Any other comments on that? All right, so if I say none, I'll move down now into the finance progress committee, which will be capital needs discussion.
Yeah, that's, I'm told that we are, that there's life in the tunnel with the roof.
Obviously, new progress, everybody.
Should be, they should be finished soon. Actually, you know, our maintenance guy said, I think they're a few days away, but one of the roofers told me, well, there's life in the tunnel, we put it that way, it's how he said it, so. So he, he has, 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 he's on this, but, you can see that they're also working on retaining walls around the perimeter of the building, and stairwell over there from on Main Street. I don't know, I don't have a timeline on that, they started on time, and I don't know when they're supposed to finish. Coming down the pipe, this is from the city side, is I've seen the plans for solar panels on the roof, and solar canopies in the apartment.
Wow.
What I would like to see, and one of the things I would ask for, and put in, put in the building brothers this year, that, that is, get your, your, that's a indicator, is I'd like to see some more key card access in certain, in certain areas of the, of the, well, one, our key card system is no longer supported, depending on the wrong stuff, I mean, it can't be parts. And two, we have some, we have some areas, like the break room, for instance, that remain unlocked for convenience sake, but probably not a great idea. Also, the storage room over here is unlocked for convenience sake, staff comes through the line, and I asked if we'd consider putting key cards in there. It's in the budget proposal, hopefully it will get, that will get passed. One other thing I've, I've been being asked about is, you know, hundred fifty anniversary is coming up in a few months, I'd like to see what we can do to do a little bit of that, you know, cleaning from the outside of the building, and at least, and those lenses in the atrium, for lighting in the atrium, you, you might, if you look up there, at least there, we already see a half of them missing, you know, it's getting more accessible. So I'm hoping that will, that will happen. So those are, those are the, the, the main capital needs that, and I, oh, also, we're getting to do Schiller, which should be installed, turned off. So, it's, so, you know, we're approaching, so we sold the building to the city in twenty seventeen, and we're, we're renting the neighborhood of five minutes, so.
Not including that house, and all the, of the.
Parking lot, especially, parking lot.
Yeah, including all that stuff, I mean, you know, we're talking, you know, tens of thousands, just in normal operations each year, plus all the capital investments that this is, that's.
I want to have a parking lot, place to walk out of.
And that's absolutely.
And I can drive my little car without leaving there, the problems.
And, and, absolutely.
If there was a problem there, then I'd.
No, there are, there are times where it's, you know, which is, you know, a good problem to have, there's still parking across the street, in the garage. I guess, I, 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 you know, we got a timeline emailed yesterday, we gave that, we gave that Melissa today, just, I'm sorry about that, but we'll start some, some internal work, the week of Thanksgiving. we gave that Melissa today, uh, just, I'm sorry about that, but, uh, we'll start some, some internal work, the, the week of, uh, Thanksgiving. We're gonna do some things around that, it's, uh, to make way for this stuff. Then that first week of December is when we'll do the, uh, the demo of the current service desks, the service desk, the children's desk, uh, we, we start to installation of the new, that week?
No, that's like two weeks later.
Okay, I think two weeks later is just the final connection, uh, but, uh, it should be all wrapped up in, uh, uh, December 19th.
All for that?
December 19th.
It should be January 1st.
So, I, I'm, I'm...
Oh, give a meeting that day, yeah.
I'm working with homework and half to, to take some of the, uh, what we discarded furniture off our hands. As we've kind of, listen, I kind of walked around today and looked at, I think, I think we can let them come soon and get some of it. I, I think they, just to make it easier, so maybe we don't have time or need this right. I think we can do some reduction in seating for a couple months, and, and, uh, talk to reach out to Sir Tom Dawson over there and see if they're able, willing, kind of get some of it over there. Uh, and we'll, as far as the collectible, uh, mid-century furniture, we'll talk about that, so, this is next.
And can you basically, that's a...
Yeah.
Well, we said not in gold mine.
Oh, I already know that.
Let me, let me grab, let me, I, I forgot to grab the, the, uh, the appraisal, did you like to see that? All right, let me just read it, I'll be right back.
I saw you take a picture.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna pull one more.
We go into Ed Walker right after this.
Well, I got a bid on it.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Do you want a chair too?
No.
Do you want chairs?
I have a, so, like...
One chair? Just one chair?
Yeah.
Okay, I wanted to do my next question, where are all these asked?
This?
I love my book, that, it's, I send one every day.
Do you have a board?
No, I'm joking, I don't know, I do know, like, about, we're out of...
So, so Mr. Walker appraised the collectible mid-century furniture.
I think it's great, yeah, that really is.
At, at a total value, or without the actual value.
The thing is, I, I want to know that it's going, so I can get on.
I agree.
I love Mr. Walker.
Yeah, so, I think the idea was we keep at least a few of each piece, uh, just for historical purposes, within local history, you know, uh, or wherever, uh, and...
I think we can back here. No, I mean, seriously, like, if they're that expensive, like, I should be...
Whatever you guys, whatever you guys think. Whatever you guys think, uh, I'm not happy that I'm open to anything, but I, I, you know, I figure a couple of each is probably, you know, I mean, uh... But even bucket chairs out here that are, you know, are, are worth 300 bucks a piece, you know, so, uh, and we're replacing it anyway, so, uh, we, we talked at length for, for those of you who are, are, are new to the board about, with our attorney about, you know, normally, uh, anything worth more than a thousand dollars per unit, you guys have to conduct an auction. You would get not near one to a five dollar thing, and, uh, Walker thinks you can, you know, again, if he does this, this is, you know, this is business, one of those type businesses, he teaches it, you know, and also... If we just put this stuff on auction.gov, we could be selling for 50 dollars a piece, uh, at best. So, uh, attorney, uh, this is fine to do it this way, we just need a final decision, uh, I, the board did ask me to look around for anybody else that, that might do it. Do I, could I shop perhaps on that, I couldn't find...
But he isn't giving us a discount in long...
Fifteen, fifteen percent.
So, that was kind of a...
Yeah, this, this B is...
This B is 15 percent. Uh, I, I think I quoted you, his normal is 35 percent. So, uh, anyway, that's...
But I think it gives everyone in the public, we had a feeling about the, we had a lease here.
I, yeah, I think, well, no, I think it does the opposite of that.
Oh, okay.
I think if you guys do the auction, yes, we'd do that. If he does, if he's gonna take the auction house in Chicago or someplace and, and to get, to get the highest dollar for it. If he just had an auction here at the library, uh... I don't think you're gonna get, I don't think you're gonna maximize the return, uh, because it's, it's, there, there value at that by collectors, not by me. You know, I, I would pay, uh, I like those chairs, I would dream of paying about a dollar for them. But, uh, but collectors, and he knows where the collectors are, so that's, so it does not do, and, and...
That makes sense.
But, but, but Jordan, our, our attorney, thinks that that's okay, because what we're doing is maximizing the return on attached fairer additional investment.
I'm telling you, I want a bid on the book. I got a sign up. No, I...
All right, I will just, uh, for this, this is an actual, I think this, it's honestly a hundred percent, so I think this is...
This is financial, so, it's financial, so... I make a motion to sell the book here.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Seven minutes.
There is a second.
So, then we all have to voice...
Absolutely, yeah, we're gonna have a discussion, a discussion. All right, I said, any voice, tell us something.
Hi. Hi, hi. Alana?
Alana?
Hi.
Oh, home, hi.
For downward.
Through the chair, I have a motion. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll move down now to the May, June, July and August, 2024 check register and winter report.
I make a motion to accept the check register and back report all of those.
This is what you're...
Second.
There are first and a second, uh, any discussion? Say aye, uh, we'll start, let's go.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, now.
Aye.
Thanks. So, aye, I'm in the chair, I have a motion carries, like, thank you, we'll move down now, we have a page to the August 2024 budget actual discussion.
Yeah, uh, so, please ignore my, I did comprehend that, I mean, I'm copying, but not the copy I gave to Joe, uh, it's, it, uh, at the end of, uh, August, how much is, how much of the 67 percent of the, of the, uh, here has passed? You can see we've collected 57 percent of our revenue, that'll relax behind, uh, we're right on, we're right on track for personnel expenses, we've spent 67 percent of, of our budget. But both of our two paycheck funds have passed, so that'll come in with the deck. Uh, library materials were, uh, were 49 percent, uh, I think the rest of it is not, not that significant. I want to skip to the third page of your report, which is, uh, is, uh, the balance sheets, to point out that the starting, the starting balance, uh, this is the audit number, so this is slightly different from what you guys have been seeing the rest of the year, uh, so that 1,794,000, 2,000 is off from what our, 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 our starting balance was. Uh, so we have, we have a cash balance in our operating fund right now, uh, 1,633,000 dollars change.
Should that be 2024 on all those?
It should, we should. We certainly should, thank you, this is why, this is why we got, this is why we got it.
This is why you had you on there.
We're at, uh, 397,000 in our capital fund. Uh, we're at 12,000 in our Canton fund, and that was, you know, was our, was our intent to spend that down in a couple years, 'cause we, we've done that.
I've seen a lot of respect.
Yes.
Like, all of you people think Canton is bad.
Yeah, 34,000 in our, in Meyer fund, Meyer fund is for the local history only, uh, we're at 9,000 dollars in more of donations, we do need to spend that down. Uh, so our total cash balance, uh, as it's a federal warrant, is, uh, 2 million and change. A couple notes here, uh, we will be, uh, spending down, uh, all, essentially all of the capital reserve fund, and, uh, some of the operating cash fund on the, on the furniture project, uh, and I'll give you guys this, this final numbers, uh, that's fine. Uh, my concern, it's not a concern, it's just a hassle, uh, is that since we're doing it, it's in December, uh, and our fiscal year ends December 31st, uh, we may have to, I'll give you guys a final, uh, budget in October, but we may have to budget for it next year, because, you know, we may be invoicing nothing here. I think the last invoices are usually paid around between 17th and 20th of December, so we may have a, we may have to make a little adjustment. Moving on, if there's no questions about the actual, I'll move on to the projection. So, this is the worst case scenario projection, uh, in July, uh, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna share here. Okay, so... Okay. So, this is the property tax number we collected in the line, we make that a little bit bigger, uh, and that is probably the biggest single month property tax collection ever, if you're comfortable with that. So, my projection, that you guys didn't see, 'cause we didn't meet in August, in, in August was very passive, uh...
It's a good thing we didn't meet that, we'd be disappointed.
Yeah, well, this was probably the smallest collection I've seen, uh, maybe in, in my entire tenure, at least, uh, 10 years that I've been, been, been in more than made up, in, in a bad way, for that really large, uh, collection, so we're at, uh... Uh, if you can refer, you can pass it. I, if, if that doesn't even out, if, for the rest of the year, if that, uh, our tax collection doesn't even out for the rest of the year, so again, worst case scenario, based on, you know, uh, the, the, the pattern in which we usually collect, uh, those funds, I'm projecting a 93,000 dollar shortfall. I feel pretty confident that that won't happen, now, shortfall is not uncommon, uh, but I don't think it'll be that dramatic. P P R T, however, is no short of, so P P R T is personal property replacement tax, and that is a, uh, uh, replace, uh, uh, that, that is a state corporate tax. Uh, it is, it replaces the personal property tax that was, uh, in, in 70s. You can see we pledged it 740,000 dollars, uh, we are on pace to collect 546,000. I don't know that that's ever happened, uh, and it's not gonna get much better next year, it's poor river, but, uh, that's a heck of a shortfall, in a, in a, you know, four and a half million dollar burden. So, uh, that's not good, uh, that's not good at all, uh... What, the other numbers I want to point out here, medical insurance, that's actually coming in really good so far, uh, we're self-insurance fund, so we see savings in real time, but we also can see, you know, everybody having an operation, uh, you know, we can see that go up in real time. Uh, but that's been consistently, we've been projecting all year, so we're around that. I think this conference travel number is really gonna come down, uh, by the end of the year, uh, we've only got one more conference, so I think it's gonna be where... This number, I, I think we can actually reduce by about 22 percent, I'll get you, I'll get you a verification of that by October, uh... Because that was, that was the deal we're planning on landing on for this year, this period, uh, that computer software number is, I think, going to settle down a little bit. This is just based on now, but it's not, okay, it's based on past years, uh, this is, uh, this one, I think, is pretty accurate, we're gonna land just, uh, just a few hundred dollars of, of, uh, small capital, I think, you know, could come out, uh, a lot, I think. Uh, there's one last, one last thing I'd like to do for, for capital, and I would like to get in the third, in the fourth quarter of this year, I would like to get a, a hole locker for outside, so, you know, 24 seven, we can pick up the hole. Uh, so, we're looking at, in this worst case scenario budget, uh, about a 26,000 dollar shortfall, which, you know, until again, and since our spending is well under, but what we're budgeting, that's nothing to worry about, I still, we've done it so well.
We know, you know, you want to end the year with money.
But, but we'll, you know, we'll, we'll keep a close eye on it, and, and it's really that, uh, I don't expect that P P R T number to get any better, but I think that the, I think the real estate taxes, well, again, if we get, if we just get what we're loving, we're, we're talking, we're rolling. So, that's where we are, uh, on this year's budget.
I have, I, I, I'm interested to see if the hole locker would increase our circulation.
Yeah, I, I'm interested also.
But they can't get here very, very out of...
It, it, it certainly has that potential, I don't think if it does, I don't think it'll be dramatic.
No, but even if it increases a little bit, that would be great.
But I think it could, I think it definitely could have that effect. And as part of our strategic plan is to, is to increase access to your self-service electronics, it just, it fits in with our...
Any more comments, questions, comments? All right. We've done the F Y, the five letter draft discussion.
Okay, this is, uh, this is a, again, a, an early draft, and I, I did amend it against the dead, uh... So, uh, make that a little bit bigger. Uh, can you read that all right? Okay. We had, I think we had a real good discussion about this last week, uh, and trying to figure out the best way to freshen, uh, uh... I have meeting the city manager that, that can change, potentially can change some of these, some of these numbers, uh... Right now, I'll just kind of get to the, the bottom line here, is I'm, on, you know, on this version, I'm looking to change something, uh... Right now, I'm looking at a shortfall, right? About 42,000 dollars, but I think we came to an agreement on this, that this end, yeah.
What?
Yeah. Then that shortfall becomes 20,000 dollars, uh, and that's something that city manager said, we'll make up. Here's what it does, which is great, that's great, and I'm not, I'm not complaining about that, but what does it do? This is a, this represents a 1.4 percent increase in, in savings across the board. Last year was a 1.4 percent increase. Two years ago, we did a, we did, I think, a three and a half percent plus a half percent, uh, bonus, uh, when, when there was a nine percent push. We're, you know, our staff, we, we... We're, you know, our staff is losing current. I believe my two goals when I, when I sat down to work on this year's budget was to get, now. Seriously, you know, through the contract, with the, with the negotiating, I'm not saying we can't do something without that, we really, we have the plans, but I, but my, I wanted to at least get management to stay up, but federating something in the end, I wouldn't see. My other goal was to get this number up. Books in the materials, and you can see it's now. And that's because of what we were talking about earlier, electronic circulation, it's going through the roof, and it's a paper use business model. Essential, it's not a hundred percent paper use, but that's a lot of it. So even without doing that, we're seeing a twenty thousand dollar shortfall, why? Okay. This represents, and we may get some more in here, we may get another fifty thousand, but we may, but on the other hand, we may not even get that. Okay? But what that is, is a three percent increase in property tax. So the equalized assessed valuation of properties in Decatur went up seven percent. So we're not, maybe we're not capturing the book. I understand based on, being I had with CFO of the city last week, if Mr. Wilson, the city manager, reiterated that to me today, is that's what counts anyways. Because that gets everybody a little more money, and also drives each individual taxpayer great. Even though they might pay more, does that make sense? So the valuation's gone up seven percent. Our levy goes up three percent, not our rate, but our, our amount that we're levying for. So any, so some individual taxpayers may simulate, because their property value went up, they may pay more, but if they look at their rate, their rate might, might have, it's anywhere, even went down. In fact, our rate the last few years.
Also, and it's a bunch of properties as well.
And that's not, for what, at our rate, that's not that significant for us. But our rate, if you look at our rate, it's going down from about point three four percent to, last night, the number I did find was twenty point three, to point three one. Even though we've gained a little bit in, in the amount of, you know, a hundred dollars. This is a three percent, had we been doing three percent increases all along, we'd probably be okay. But we had six years where we did, where we had flat out. So we kind of dug a hole. What papered over it, what made it look okay, was PPRT was going through the roof. We averaged eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, it's now declined by thirty-one percent over the last two years. The other thing is pilot, when I first started here, pilot was, has payment due of taxes, and that is a local allocation from the city. That was under two hundred thousand dollars. That got up to over half million, but now it's quite a. But you can see that this equals a four percent decrease in revenue, even though we're, our main source of revenue went up three percent.
Who needs to go up a little more?
I'm sorry?
Who needed to go up a little more significantly?
Well, I'm going to give you guys some comparisons. But I looked at some, I looked at per capita funding. So this is not to be confused with per capita grant, but we are funded, our library is funded at forty-four dollars and twenty-seven cents per every woman and child in, in Decatur. So that's, that three million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand divided by seventy thousand five hundred and twenty-two, which is our population. Okay? So I did that for some of our, our neighbors. Bloomington is funded at sixty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents per person, Bloomington public library. Champagne is eighty-three dollars and twenty-three cents per person. Normal is seventy-nine dollars and fifty-five cents per person. For ban is a hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-one cents per person. So, but that's not how it's funded, right? We're not funded by per capita, we're funded by equalized assessed valuation. Property values are higher in all these communities, so I thought, well, we'll look at the rate. That's hard to define, and so far, I've only found the cover. Bloomington is actually a little bit lower than ours, so their EAB must be really, really good, because there are only eight thousand more people in us. Normal's rate is point three six, and we're at point three one as of twenty point three, I haven't been applying our, uh, the normal yet. So somebody said to me, so John Shirley, who's in, who owns Parkville, but aren't we more like Dambler Economical?
No, we're very not.
So I looked, so I, so I looked at Dambler. Seventy-four dollars and ninety-eight percent, yeah, cents.
Oh!
Their, their rate, point five now, ours is point three.
If you think about like, I mean, I just think about like some money that I save by using the library, like it, it runs out on your slip. I saved, like, since, like, thirteen, I saved sixty-five thousand dollars, I used it in my, like, I had a library.
For, for most, for most homeowners in Decatur, it takes one or two trips to the library to get you a.
Yeah, and I have to be on program and order money, like, additional services.
Most pay less, most, most, I, so we knew, every year, you guys vote on what does a non-resident card cost? So a non-resident card is somebody who lives in an unsecured area, and we're the closest library, and we have a portal that we follow to get a, what's a fair price? It's, it's, this year, it's ninety-one dollars. So that's basically what your average, your average taxpayer in Decatur is paying, is ninety-one dollars per household. Had we been, again, had we, in those years that we stayed, that we stayed at, you know, we were two million, nine hundred and something, had we gotten modest increases all along, I don't think we'd be, we'd be having this discussion. But here's, I'm making an argument to, to the administrators, and they're hearing me. I think that if you do feel like this is inequable and want to make an argument, you know, I would welcome you picking up the phone and calling the city council. Because I think that the electeds are going to pay more attention to the trustees than to the administrator. I think that, but I think that's, I do think it's my role today to make choose the administrators, and I think it was heard, you know, but they, like, but they answered the city council. I, I don't know, how do you? They, so they, city council decided, so they have, they levy for a handful of things. Property taxes for individuals. Sales tax is what, is what they make most of their money from, I believe, but, and, and I don't remember all of them, it's, it's, uh, police pension fund, fire pension fund, municipal, they don't levy these schools, they don't levy those. Yeah, they're, uh, municipal ban, the library, and they decide, they decide that the aggregate levy, they just, they decided they want to keep it three percent. So we might not even get three percent, because the state, state laws says, if an actuary is, if the actuary is a pension fund, needs to go up, funding needs to go up to seven, state laws says they have to do that. So they have to fund, they have to fund those police and, and fire pension funds for, I, I have a quarrel with that whatsoever, I think that's great. But we're a part of this aggregate levy, and so that was us fighting for the commons. The other, the other variables to keep in mind here are the general fund, it is, is, is a cost that's allocated to us by, from the city. So the city provides us services, they provide us payroll services. They do our bookkeeping and, so HR services, some purchasing, they allocate us a cost for that. That's gone up to sixty-six percent in two years. Now, there was a change in administration two years ago. And, you know, I, I talked to our CFO, Ruby James, and I very talked with her, and I said, I don't understand this. And she couldn't find any, she couldn't find out very good, actually, because you guys have been very, you know, superior, you're former CFO, she couldn't find how the allocation was, so she had to find some objective thing to tie it to, and she did it by steps. So she's got objective numbers she can point to, this is how we figure it out. And I applaud that, however, of this hundred and eighty thousand moving allocated, for instance, forty-one thousand, that is for HR services. We hire one or two civil servants a year, and they don't help us with management, they help us with the civil service hours. Forty-one thousand seems pretty cheap. And she, she heard me, and I think Mr. Grayson heard me a little while ago, and we'll see, we'll see what happens, but I think that's a and risk management is the other one, it's gone up, and actually, it's gone up twenty-three percent this year, fifteen percent over, over two years. Part of that is, that I, my goal with that is, we should only be allocating the cost for liability, and for the contents, ensuring contents, not the real property, and we are being allocated the cost for real property. That may go away, she heard me, she's going to talk to their attorney, and I think that
We don't owe it, so.
Plus, the contract's very clear that it says, it said we can't be allocating property.
Well, she did pay them rent, it's not like we don't pay them for the property.
I, I was, I was actually schooled by the attorney that sometimes, right, you do pay to, to some property insurance. It's, that is, in some contracts, that's the way it works, but it's not in our contract.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not in our contract.
You're going to go buy a contract.
Yeah. So this is, you know, again, we're at, you know, city manager assured that we can make this up. And that's great, I'm, I'm happy, but it doesn't solve some, it doesn't solve the issue of stamp game underpaid. It doesn't solve the issue, and we'll get it, like, next month, in December, we'll get a, we'll get a, an update from our we have a lot of our HR stuff from HR Source, we, we subscribe to a service called HR Source, it pays four hundred dollars for, we have HR problems, we go to the, and we talk to, we can talk to HR, we, we got the personnel or HR attorneys for no extra cost, my problem, so, but.
Kind of a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
But if we're going to be forced to use the city, do we get rid of the labor force?
I don't think so, because we're not part of it, we're not part of it, that's why, that's why we've got to make sure.
So it's library, police, fire, police and fire pension, municipal ban, general purpose, one and all, they're like, no, obviously, you're dead.
Those are, that's, well, that's what their aggregate levy is.
Yeah.
So, but, but HR Source will be sending us in December, they'll be sending us our scalework, so our scalework is just for management, at least not for, 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 you know, which could move some people on the wrong side of the pit for them, you know? So this is, I, it, it, this has been a challenging, a challenging budget to work with. Again, we're talking about allocations going up substantially, while, while revenue, I'm sorry, that's a great doubt, but it's a four percent decrease. That's a sixteen percent decrease. Uh, that's actually, that's, that's, actually, those numbers are, I want to pull something out, because those numbers, they didn't miss late, it's not as big as, as that.
Isn't that, sorry, the first management include workers' comp allocation?
Nope, that's a different, that's a different budget plan altogether, that's right here, I call it unemployment charge. Uh, that's not one, that's not, that's not one, it does include workers' comp, yes, it does.
Honestly, it doesn't sound like that to happen in the year. I mean, all things considered.
And he's no more than, than we, I bet we, if, if we pull the property out of there. What's that?
Freeze out of the rent.
Yeah, no, I totally get that.
If we pull the, if we pull property out of there, it'll get better.
No, I totally get that.
So, I think it does include, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure they, that it includes workers.
I, I just, I didn't see the, but the workers, that would be the self-insurance, nevermind.
Well, self-insurance is public insurance.
I know, but sometimes they can be, you can be in back. I'm, I know my little.
I'll find that, I'll find out for sure.
Just like that happened.
Just like that happened, but not as much as I should have. I was just curious.
But I do want, I do want, there's, that's, that, that decrease in overall is so much misleading here to why. Because the other grand line here is just a disaster, and, you know, it's, it's a placeholder for one thing, so if we pull that out, we're looking at if we pull it out, it's one percent, and if I pull it there, it'll be a hundred. So, again, this is a, this is a first draft, it's not, it's actually part of a draft, but it's not, this is not, it's not an action item, this is a, a start to discussion item. If, if anybody wants a, you know, a further conversation of one-on-one, or two-on-one, or, or me. Or if anybody has any and I, I didn't get some, I feel, I'm, I'm, because they don't make the very public, and I didn't get the authority for the same reason, but I'm going to reach out to their directors to get those numbers. I, here's, we were at, were you at that, that, that I O M last year? We were at a session at, at the Northern Library Association, across this last year, presentation by the assistant director at Frankville. And she said, we got our city council to give us more money, because we showed them that even in Decatur, it's not that good. And according to us, that's not good. Really, they're classy, really classy, you know, a little whatever, you know, it's like that. You tell, one of my, some wonders to it.
All right, um, anything inside there? Foundation, I think, I know it was a meeting, but.
Well, I did meet briefly with the foundation president today. He's still, he, he's, he feels like a merger between the foundations, so, we're going to pursue that.
Really? Yeah, we're in, yeah.
They'll come before the board, and then they'll see them.
Well, I will, I will leave you talking, but, yeah, I'm just, I'm not.
Fantastic, I wish it were.
Yeah, yes. All right, I'll move out to the friends of library. They elected a new president and vice president interim last week, their president resigned, they have the vice president. They, they elected Charles Smith as interim president.
That is, that's not that easy.
Ed is interim vice president.
Oh.
Ed Harvey is the interim vice president. Ed Harvey is interim vice president. They did approve to fund not to exceed $50,000 for the 150th anniversary events. That's minus what they've already committed, which is directly... We're still working on it. We'd like them to just give us the name. Or at least their annual budget.
Renee, I would give you an annual budget of forty-five. I mean, when I was on the front, it was what I wanted.
I think they are too. They just like to feel all good comments that I saw. But is it true that dealers can come to wholesale anywhere? Yeah, okay. They answer this.
I don't remember. They say it's policy. And I say policies that are, yeah, accessible to everybody and by the board are not going to cost.
Also, like, is some of their things that's worse?
I see, I see their, I see their point. They are, they're there. They want to keep good stock. But I said, you know, hypothetical, let's say somebody comes into this and they want to buy every single book you've got. You sell to them knowing that you're going to get more books.
I mean, it'll raise your prices.
Yeah. The idea is...
They're doing a great job. Like, there's no...
They made more money, they made more money last year than they've ever made. But I think it's not close.
Even with less work, I mean, like, it is still worth doing book sales. But I mean, from my point of view, people down there, they're like, you know, it is more like work, like, on a weekly basis. But it's second book sale. That was a lot.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was just super labor intensive and costly. I mean, it costs a lot of money.
It costs a lot of money. It just seems like if you just sell stuff from that room down there and get things going and moving.
Well, they agree. They agree now.
That's the best.
They agree now. I mean, they made $38,000 last year. We're just by far the worst here.
Without the expensive hassle.
So there's some developments. We're from the foundation, we're starting library points. I appreciate that. Thank you. We'll move down to the other department. Libraries is...
Yeah, I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't remember whether we had talked about where this ring we were down, the share agreement. We were one of fifteen libraries that against it. So we passed. Shares, shares is, yeah, it's for, it was for our, you know, our fees. They raised our fees nineteen percent. And made it all inclusive for things that we didn't want. So we're paying for services that are redundant for us.
And the, having libraries right?
Fifteen.
Not have any.
But only a fair form vote. Most of them, every time I sat in a little colleague, we were complaining about, I was only two or one of fifteen that voted against it.
So we could look into the finances of switching. I think they're going to get tremendous dramatically more than what the cost was. So it's much more, more or less back to this point.
I know. I mean, I appreciate that, sure. Like, I think it's really, like, then overall, but yeah.
But Samuel and ILA seem pretty expensive. We're on our own.
Yeah.
Pretty costly.
Excellent. See, no more further discussion of that. We'll move down to old business, which includes open trustee seats. So Shail Carson will be, she's not able to join this evening. So she will be next following meeting.
Who is on the board is not here.
Joe.
That's it. So everybody else is fine?
Yes, a little bit of a design. I also, I guess, have to separate my office.
So...
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Elizabeth and Jacoby for work reasons. I knew we will be, Mayor will be interviewing two more people and two better.
For what?
Pardon?
For what?
So Paul Cross and Ashley Petty. Will be interviewed.
I like having somebody who was unrepresented group of people on our board.
Yes, and, you know, obviously, that was, I guess you could say, part of the reason why we filled the list as quickly trying to, or inspiring to do that, which I guess I'd like to still be in mind. Obviously, we do have much more supportive numbers, let's say, than we did just a couple of months ago when operating with functionality standpoint. So I'm still on that push, you know what I'm saying? So I would encourage...
One of the two people we're interviewing, two things, of course.
Just be great. I would kind of, so, can we be, or somebody, or a couple?
Yeah.
And I would say that, you know, something, somebody pushing from Spanish, she's got the library as a couple of...
Well, we're still working with Jacob. And, you know, so we're still, we're still down in, with Elizabeth. We'll be, we will have a presence Sunday at the Hispanic Arts Festival. That'll be helpful.
Yes. They have a few thousand people with them. And Katie, programming librarian, and there you have some library systems in Spanish for people to be here. And be letting them know what's coming up. We have final little storytimes coming up in the summer.
We have a presence at Pride, so...
Final little storytime is for... Did you say English? I mean...
There's going to be a special Katie's crafty things where they're going to be painting. They're going to be making their own dye with the insect that you get the red from. It'll be very interesting. It's going to be more stem.
I would do the, I would like us to have crafty things where it makes a sapper and flower.
Lotus lantern.
Lotus lantern. It was so cool. Because like, a woman presented it on Zoom and like, help us, like, it would be beautiful. All flowers, it was so... Lots of information, good presentation.
What would I see, though, if I moved out of the front and right update? Can I mention that?
I don't know whether I sent you guys an email or we have been so long, but we did not get the...
You told us.
Okay.
I think at the last meeting?
That's the update.
Okay. I was like, did they like come back and be like, just kidding? That's what I was hoping this was. That's the update. I was like, ooh.
I wish.
So I can see we have a meeting next month scheduled. One more, right?
Yes, for the decennial committee on government efficiency. Well, you were as one of the citizens. And now you're trustee. So automatically, automatically, everybody, trustee and me are on the committee.
So we need one more.
Yeah. We, I've got the reports written, and it's not very detailed. I'll speak honestly. Yeah, so, so, yeah, you did it with Park District. I mean, there's just, there's very little guidance on this. In fact, there's a lot of disagreement as to whether municipal public libraries have to do it. But our term call is a few and six, so I probably won't do it. And I'm hearing that, you know, county courts are getting these reports. And I'm like, whoa. But we do have to have two more meetings by the law. And one meeting where I present the report. And then one meeting where you approve the report. So we can't do that in the same meeting. And that's sufficient.
And you're like, you're like, it's happened out here?
I think last time we did slightly four and right.
Was this like...
Before the, before the, I think she, what she's talking about is something different.
Oh, yes, there are other meetings.
And then thirty minutes later, then...
So we'll need to find one more citizen to replace the one that's on the library. It's just we've had so much trouble. I mean, I've had her, been sitting on her porch for a while, but we've had so much trouble with form.
Joan has on there, right?
Yep.
Does Sarah Beth have it? She might see it here.
No, I'm sorry. Good Joan, name's Sabine?
Okay, I thought it was her.
No, I haven't decided on that. I, I... But they were all standing there.
I forgot about it. I just don't have that in here.
So we'll need to get that scheduled by, so we had eighteen months. And we're at a year, we're at, well, we're at fourteen or fifteen months right now.
Absolutely. So we'll, briefly, you know, you obviously, you're a library now. Obviously, you're aware of that.
Well, the next, that's, that's going to be the, we're obviously probably...
I've been getting forwards.
Yeah, that's, as long as you're getting it, that's the main thing. We still want to get you a library email account. And you, but there's problems right now. But our ice work just was updated. And it's... I assume that they got, I assume that they got it. Do you drive on the wall?
Some, I mean, I'm, what is this? We're not there yet.
Yes. Well, Google, I don't know, it's too...
All right, any other question on your old business? Saying I'm going to move on into new business. A new message from Coco from plan creative.
Oh, and I, I didn't load on, I didn't load on...
On screen? On screen?
I didn't, I didn't do the power.
I saw it. Which one? This one?
Yeah.
Sorry, I don't have a copy of that yet.
I think I did. Yeah, I did. So we're going to do a plan creative for, you know, a marketing plan. Let me share this with the owner. So we're working on this brand messaging. I don't know if you can slide.
The top line goes to the right? It was all market.
So here's what they did. They did focusers. We developed brand pillars. Now, brand pillars are internal facing. This is what we, you know, we did onboarding such brand promise. It also intended to be teamwork facing, although they said we could make that outward facing. Mission statement, and a tagline. These are the words when they talk to, they talk to all of us. And these are the words they got, because they think that came up mostly when they talk to us. Leadership and management of teamwork, randomness, flexibility, reporting. SNAP, its flexibility, randomness, catalysts. Not prepared to work. These are the words that all groups chose. Modern, progressive, non-decided, familiar, casual, inclusive, relaxed, disorganized, which is, and nurturing. What do you feel are the core responsibilities that you gave public libraries? Well, to be welcome and accessible, to be a third space provider, and a community resource. What do you feel are the core responsibilities of all features for the collaborative partner, entertainment provider, the network provider? Our biggest supporters, Zion, of course. But also word of point to Amazon, you know, streaming gas, and other culturalists. Any misconceptions or challenges where the brand could be strengthened or clarified? Library anxiety, that's the thing where people just get nervous about being in libraries and talking, asking for help in libraries. Perception of fees and costs due to services like that we have, explain fees. Unrealistic image of the library and perception of unsafe due to location and house. How do you describe it to your friends and family? Reuse, no fees, more than books, accessibility on anywhere. Shared system and network, and how would you define it? How would you describe your current brand personality or tone of voice? Family, helpful, inviting, happy, attractive? Finish this sentence. As K-Book Library, who can improve, communications, general network, consistency in customer service marketing, helping, community presence, tech services, and focus on lower-end deep core marketing services. And the PPL always strive to enrich, teach, educate, enable success. Something for everyone, very tough to preserve, is helpful advice and direction informed without surprises in life. So these are the brand pillars that are... Very, very space in the right. Again, these are teamwork facing documents for onboarding and... These are very close.
But this is correct.
No, I corrected. I didn't correct. So read what you got in your packet, because that is, I corrected my mind. Apparently, you didn't load the corrected one. Okay, so we did, we did edit this in the final recommendation in your packet. K-Book Library is dedicated to being a third space provider to its patrons. We didn't like President Sisyphe. It doesn't matter where you live here. Community resource center. K-Book Library will always function, will always function as a resource center to help fulfill the state needs of our patients. Library department. Staff at K-Book Library will offer a vast array of programs. Will strive to support and partner with organizations and educators to enrich the lives of our patients and share their experience. Entertainment integration. K-Book Library will offer a vast array of innovative services focused on engaging and inclusion in the lives of our patients. Empowering quarter. I was really glad to get this came up with everybody, with our staff. K-Book Library will be recognized as a preferred and diversity-focused organization. So those are our brand pillars that we use as onboarding. This is the brand promise. And what we ended up on was what you have in your packet, which is the brand, K-Book Library is committed to understanding the evolving social, educational, and informational needs of our patients in the community. We are dedicated to providing comprehensive, holistic services delivered by a considered, responsible, supportive team.
They're not dedicated to the Oxford.
I am.
I'm full of the Oxford.
You're a convert.
I am. I love it.
It fills me that we're going away from it again.
That's my...
Mission statement. So this is where, where it becomes, and we can just stop looking at our report now, but that's, mission statement. K-Book Library fosters community growth by delivering free access to enriching and entertaining resources, engaging programs, and supportive welcoming space for all. And the tagline is that we decided on your destination for discovery. Again, for your final approval, but that was the one that was by far the winner. We had some other options here. Your destination for like home discovery, original lives, one discovery, tunnel, or discover way to, et cetera, et cetera. But SNAP overwhelmingly chose your destination for discovery.
I thought we...
So why?
So why? But we can still use that, just as our tagline.
We can still use that in our...
That's what AVM uses, enriching lives. It's still were used. Yeah, it's were used. It was not, not used. Yeah, there's so much.
I liked, what I liked was the alliteration of K-Book Library is your destination for discovery and the brand of it. But the apologies like that. And since they all leave in discovery, which is interesting because discovery didn't really, any of that stuff.
Libraries were like, where did discovery come from?
But I liked it. And anyway, it's, and there's no formal, there's no formal requirements for you guys to present, but I think it's important that you, you guys, you guys like on board with this. It's not, there's not any point to do that.
I think it's good. I make emotion to your liking.
I'll set liking as true.
Michelle would be enough and fast.
All right, leave the first and second. Any discussion? Sitting at all, if there's a question, fine. I'll leave the first and the second, uh, any discussion, say none, all good, we'll see if I, by saying hi.
Hi.
And chair eyes have motion carries, moving down into the media. We also have to think about foundation, and if someone can know about French and British.
I thought I was on foundation, I'm not on foundation.
Well, all three of you are, and that can't happen.
Can't happen. Well, you can stay on it since you're on it, and I'm already in the interview, so, and it's, I'm like, yeah.
Get some money for it, so...
I'll go on.
I appreciate you, so... Please have a ring, I'll go right there. I'm like, so aside from, um, those ones there, I, I think Shyle was, and she preferred the finance community first day.
She did, it also seemed like, like that's really a place that we're in, so... But keep in mind, keep in mind, there's also probably two more coming next month.
Finance?
Finance is Wednesday, can you or Thursday? And can you or Thursday?
I prefer finance.
Which Thursday? Or which Wednesday session?
Second Wednesday, second, fourth day.
First Thursday or second Monday?
Second Monday. It's finance.
Like, I have personal problems.
Well, I actually don't say that for the whole, you know, like, the... You, you don't, you don't, uh, but, but, but we've got, but we've got a, we've only got two on PPR right now.
Who's on PPR?
Uh, Carl one, uh, and...
You should be on PPR.
It's fine.
And the next...
Thursday's your time, I mean...
PPR's on Wednesday.
The next PPR meeting is, uh, is two weeks from today.
We can switch it to Wednesday.
Now, you've got, again, it's not written in stone, but it is written, uh, you know, the rest of, the rest of this year, in twenty-five, it's been passed, and it's...
We could amend it.
You, you can amend it, and you can...
The two people that are coming on, if you know anything about the background, sorry, the two people we're interviewing, if you know anything about the background?
Uh, I have met Ms. Cross a few times, uh, I think she was, I think she's the former state archaeologist.
Oh, she loved you, yeah.
And she works, uh, a lot of, and she works with a lot of historical societies in downtown, uh... And, uh, Ms. Petty, I, uh, she's a, she's a parent, uh, and she brings the kids here all the time, I really, I think she's a recent company, I don't know, uh, I don't really know her very well, she seems very nice, but I don't know what her background is. Well, I'm gonna, at first, uh, I, I'm new to this, so I gotta, you know, back into a corner, so...
I would prefer finance.
He's actually, should be on finance, he's a number one.
Sounds like we're gonna, really, we're a bunch of trusts, so, um, and we'll figure out from here, how much, if you, uh, you know, the next, the meantime, if you'd like, um...
Well, I mean, you, I mean, five, you, you, you could put them both on finance. I mean, it's five, and that would be one, two, three, four, five. You could put it, and the new people are just all, like, they'll be on PPR. But that's...
Well, this president make that decision.
But that's your call, so, I'm just saying it's possible, it sounds like it's Wednesday.
I mean, unless we, unless, unless we then...
I think it's just a matter of date and time, I mean...
I was like, probably the afternoon.
Pretend the committee would have to do it.
Yes, I will go for most, absolutely, as I don't know.
Uh, sometimes, they have sometimes in the past, but there's nothing by laws that requires that, it is just an appointment, uh, and then there's foundation friends, and that's... Those are, those are...
The rest we even, we're, we're, you know, we have it from our first school, and everyone not to say that, but...
That was, that's me, right?
I do believe, not at all.
When's the front?
So, Shyle has, has, has volunteered to be the, our, our newest board member, uh, our other board member, uh, she has volunteered to be the Friends of Asia.
Oh, she has?
Yes.
Yeah, Shyle was.
I think you... You're welcome. My thoughts could be...
That was my feeling about it, that it was, not even being on, or eventually, we're, we're, we're just sitting here after we've...
Maybe I'll go next time, because I'm already here, actually. What is their meeting?
It's this, it's the second Thursday at four o'clock, second Thursday, like, four...
It's, it's at four, four, four thirty at this.
I don't know. I have to wait for an hour or two prior, I have to, uh, talk to the board.
So, so, is it, what, our, is it, is it foundation planning, I think?
No, we had to fit it out, so, yes, 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 a point, and, okay, so, 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 Sophia comes off, uh, and...
I didn't hear a single thing.
Friends, friends, you're, friends, you're table for now, and then the, and then, uh, the two new members here will, I, you, on five. Oh, so that leaves, but Shyle won.
That's why you're... We can do some reappointments.
That's why you're...
We can just report it for you now.
So, I've been watching to do the appointments, that's just described, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, new discussion, say none, all good, we'll see if I, by saying hi.
Hi.
Uh, we can hear eyes have motion carries, we have a discussion, I will just forward your board, say none. There's a first.
I'll second.
There's a second, period of discussion, say none, all good, we'll see if I, by saying hi.
Hi.
Uh, if you...
Bye.
We are on, we are adjourned at four, five.
Six, seven, eight.